Our meeting is going to begin shortly. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please silence all electronic devices. Thank you.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? All right, please, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Planning Board of the Borough of Saroval July 17th meeting to order. Beth, has this meeting been published in accordance with the Sunshine Law?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Candell, Mr. Allegra.
Here.
Mr. Bolton.
Here.
Mr. Elmeyer, Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Mueller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Velosen.
Here.
Councilman Zabrowski.
Here.
Chairman's high.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a memorialization of South Line Realty preliminary and final site plan, 926 and 928, US Highway 9, Block 439, Lots 6, 7, and 8. What's your pleasure? I need a motion to memorialize this. Motion, Chair. Do I have a second? Having a motion made and seconded, hearing no...
Hold to a roll call vote. Ms. Larmen. Mr. Mueller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Velosen.
There, yes.
Councilman Zabrowski.
Yes.
Chairman's high.
Yes.
Thank you.
Need an acceptance for the May 3, 2024, and the May 1, 2024 meetings. For the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The ayes have it. Mr. Sax, you've got the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It is working. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, members of the public. Lawrence Sax on behalf of the applicant. We were back here last on May 1, so a number of weeks ago. And at that time, we presented testimony, additional testimony for Mr. Adnan Khan, who was our engineer. We had some limited architectural testimony, and we also had Mr. William Stimmel, who was our traffic engineer, provide some traffic testimony. We certainly heard some comments that were made by the board, certainly by your professionals and by members of the public, particularly as relating to parking and possibly the need for additional services. Over the last number of weeks, we've taken a fresher look at this application, and we realize we can make some revisions to the plans. And what I would like to do this evening, Mr. Chairman, is I would like my architect to talk about some of the revisions that will be made. Some of these revisions will affect parking. We'll be able to provide more parking on this site. Without doing it on surface, we're going to explain that we'll be able to have a stacking system in the garage, which will increase the number of parking spaces by 57 parking spaces. So it will be a total of 166 parking spaces now on-site. We'll talk about the elimination of some prayer areas, which will reduce the occupancy of this particular facility. We have information about the size of the prayer mats that we'll incorporate into these plans. We will talk about the hours of operation in terms of these services. I know that that was a concern from the board last time, and I'll make a representation as to that. But I expect to have very limited testimony this evening, Mr. Chairman. The only testimony really will be from our architect, who is still under oath. And he's here, okay. And he will provide some testimony as to some revisions. Now, I understand that your professionals have not reviewed these exhibits that I'm, or the two exhibits that I'm going to provide this evening. I don't expect the professionals, your board professionals, to comment on them, because I know they need time to review it. But certainly, if there are any initial comments, we hopefully can answer that, if members of the board have any questions, and certainly if members of the public. But I really expect to have limited testimony this evening. I know that we're going to come back in September, and I believe it's going to be September 18. And at that time, we are going to provide an updated traffic report based upon the revisions that we've made thus far. And Mr. Stimmel will provide that report well in advance of your hearing. We understand, we just got these, we got these exhibits prepared just recently. I would have loved to have had them to you 10 days in advance of the hearing, but it just wasn't feasible. So I don't expect any comment really from your board professionals at this point. They need to thoroughly review it and certainly issue a review letter. But with that said, Mr. Chairman, if I can have my... Yeah, if I can have my architect, who is still under oath, Javier, he'll come up. I have some exhibits to pass out, and we'll mark them, whatever the next marking is, I'm not sure.
We're good.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess we'll mark this, whatever our next marking is. I'm not sure what it is.
If you give me one second, Mr. Sax.
Thank you.
I'm trying to take a look at myself. Those are my notes here.
Yeah, and there's two exhibits. One of them is a revised architectural plans, and the second one is a document from Klaus Multi-Parking of America, which talks about the operations of this stacked parking.
It looks like, based on my review, unless I missed it, we didn't have any exhibits at the last meeting on May 1. So the exhibit, the last exhibit marked was from the original hearing on, which was A4. So these would be A5 and A6, based on my notes.
Thank you, Mr. Allegra. All right, so A5 is the revised architectural plans, and A6 is the Klaus multi-parking manual. Okay. Javier, I'll caution you that you're still on your oath, I think from the last hearing and even from the first hearing. So let's talk about some of the revisions that we made, and let's start at the ground floor.
Yes.
Or actually, we'll start in the basement. We'll start where the parking, the garage parking is. So under the original plans, we had 60, 64 parking stalls in the garage underneath the building?
Yes, originally, we had 64.
All right, so 64 parking stalls. And what were you able to accomplish with respect to providing more parking? If you could describe that to the board. And that would be on Sheet A1, am I correct?
Sheet A1, yes, shows the below-ground parking space. We were able to reach out to a manufacturer who does lifts, Klaus, and by doing so, we're able to utilize, double up 57 of the 64 to increase our number of parking. Basically, same spot, car would drive over, get lifted, and then you're able to fit another vehicle below it.
Okay. All right, so basically, we're going from 64 parking spaces now to 121 parking spaces in the garage.
That's correct.
All right. And how were you able to accomplish this? Did you have to do any raising of the building?
Only, the basement ceiling has to be increased by 2 feet. But overall, the building height doesn't get affected, because we would lower the height of the building to accommodate the additional 2 feet that we gain in the basement.
Okay. All right. Let's go now to the next sheet, which is Sheet A2. All right, so Sheet A2 is the first-floor plan. And this is where the prayer hall is located and the gymnasium and exercise area, correct?
Correct.
All right, so if you look, can you describe to the board the change that's being made to the first-floor plan? And specifically, the elimination of a prayer area?
Okay. Well, first of all, the footprint of the building hasn't changed. What we did was we eliminated some programming and spaces to reduce the occupant load. So on the first floor, you'll see an area that's clouded, that has dining tables. That used to be men's prayer room, prayer area, which would mean it would have a high occupancy load. So by changing it to a multipurpose room, we are reducing the number of occupant load for this building. So that's one of the changes here on the first floor.
All right. And as well, there was a question that came up at the last hearing as to the size of the prayer mats. And we've now determined that the prayer mats are 4 by 3?
Yes. The prayer mats are 4 by 3. And just like in any other place, occupants' load is either calculated by area or by fixed seating. And in this case, the prayer mats is the one that we use as standard to determine how much occupant load the prayer room can hold. And what we also did was we provided walking aisles along the perimeter. And then, in the middle, all the prayer mats will basically be butt up next to each other, so there's no space. And that's how we determined the total occupant load for that main prayer room.
All right. So, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Sorry, I wasn't mine. If I heard you correctly, when, what is the size of the prayer mats? I didn't know if you were saying 4 by 3 feet, or is it 4 by 30 inches, or...
3 feet by 4 feet.
Okay, thank you.
12 feet, square feet total.
Just wanted to confirm, because I wasn't sure if I heard it correctly.
All right, so 12, that'll be 12 square feet. Now, you're providing also in the primary prayer hall and also in the women's prayer hall, which is on the second floor, you're providing aisles and walkways?
Yes, the aisle is on the perimeter only.
All right.
Originally, we didn't do that.
All right. And you can provide an exhibit showing that, I'm sure.
It's shown there on the drawing.
Okay, I just want to make sure, okay. All right. And in terms of the occupancy now, based upon the elimination of the second gentleman's prayer hall and converting that to just a multipurpose room. Now, your understanding, and we'll make this representation, is that that multipurpose room, which had been the overflow gentleman's prayer hall, will not be utilized for any ritual activities. It will only be utilized when there's no ritual activities going on. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
All right. Now, the occupancy load, based on your initial plans, I believe, was 650, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with the elimination of that gentleman's prayer area, it's being reduced to 454?
340.
I'm sorry, 340, okay.
So basically, we've taken the overall area of that prayer room, minus the circulation space along the perimeter, and then divided by the area of each prayer mat, which is 12 square feet. And that's how we arrived at 340 square feet.
Okay.
340 people.
340 occupants.
Occupants.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I believe at the last hearing, there was a question about, maybe it was the first hearing, about what if the fire marshal determines that the occupancy in this building is less than what we can show with respect to prayer mats? We will agree as a condition that if the fire marshal's number is lower than our stipulated occupancy number based on these prayer mats, we will abide by that. So we'll go with the lesser number in terms of occupancy.
And the 340 people is actually maximum occupant occupancy. So it doesn't mean that we're going to actually have 340 people, it could be less.
Okay. All right, let's talk about now the changes made on the second floor, which would be A3.
So again, on the area that's clouded, there used to be the multipurpose room. And what we did was we now made it into a meeting, two additional classrooms and youth activity space.
All right, so essentially, you've moved the multipurpose room, which was on the second floor, down to the first floor.
It was, yes.
Okay. All right, so, and now you'll have a youth lounge on the second floor and two additional classrooms. All right. Those are the only changes to the second-floor plan?
Correct.
All right. Let's now go to A4, which is the third-floor plan. And this is where you were able to reduce the size of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so if you can show the board on A4, or at least describe for them the area that's been eliminated.
Again, on the left side of the sheet, you see a clouded area that used to be about 2,000 square foot of multipurpose room, which is now, has been eliminated and moved down to the lower area.
Okay. And the third floor is just going to contain now offices, a storage area, cafeteria?
And cafeteria.
Okay. And also a boys' youth activity lounge?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the reduction in the square footage is from 44,841 square feet to 42,687 square feet?
That's correct. We reduce it by over 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Architect, a question for you on the third floor?
Yes.
In the clouded area, that's no longer a, I forgot what you said it was. If you go through the double door, what's behind the double doors?
A double door, it says access to the roof. But we can change that to a single door. But it's just for access to the roof.
I'm just, wasn't sure.
For maintenance.
So it goes, so there's a roof outside that door?
Roof, yes.
Or was that the roof?
That's the roof of the, above the second level.
Okay.
So that double door will probably be eliminated to just a single access door and locked up.
All right, and I think A5 is just showing the roof layout, so there's obviously...
Yes.
No changes with respect to that, okay. All right, so just to summarize then, you've reduced the size of the building. You've removed over 2,000 square foot, square feet of space on the third floor. You've eliminated the gents' prayer hall on the first floor, which resulted in a reduction in occupancy for ritual activities. And that area will now be used as a multipurpose room, which will only be utilized when there's no ritual activities. You've converted the second floor to two additional classrooms, and you've added a youth activity room. You've determined that the prayer mats are 3 feet by 4 feet. And as a result of all of this, we've reduced the occupancy from 650 to 340?
For the men's, 340.
For the men's, all right. So when I said 454, I was adding in the women's, right?
Yes.
All right, so the total occupancy of men's and ladies is 454?
That's correct.
Okay. And in terms of parking now, with this stacked parking system, which, by the way, I don't really expect any comments from your board professionals this evening on that. It's a rather extensive document that has to be reviewed, but that will add an additional 57 parking spaces.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of Javier. I do want to stipulate two, one other thing, though. I think a question came up. And we have to provide you with the calendar, which I looked at my notes this morning, and we did not do that. But we will provide you with the calendar well in advance of the September meeting. But we can stipulate that the times of the services year-round on Fridays, and we're talking about the two primary services on Fridays. We understand the early morning service changes because of sunrise and the late evening service changes because of sunset. But the two primary services where there's the greatest attendance would be from 12:30 to 12:50 p.m. on Friday, and then from 1:45 p.m. to 2:15 p.m. So we will commit to having two ritual prayer services.
Question for the applicant. Can you confirm the times in 2024 where the first prayer of the day was as early as 5:03 in the morning? And runs as late as... Or can you tell us how late it runs for the rest of the day?
Mr. Allegra, that, yeah, that's something I'm going to have to provide you with that calendar in advance of the next meeting, and I will do that. So you'll know every Friday service.
Not just for Fridays, it's a five prayers per day, right? It's a fairly simple question.
Well, those are just the sunrise and those are sunset times.
Those are prayer times.
Okay.
So we'd like to have it in advance?
Yeah, I will provide that to you.
For the architect, again, do you have the occupancy per room for this building?
We can provide that if you need. Otherwise, the primary occupancy is what's the use, which is the prayer.
Is it typical to use occupancy based on what we say we're going to use? Or is it typical industry standards to base occupancy on the design of the room?
It's for the use.
Okay. And that follows through with codes?
Yes, per NFPA 101, Life Safety, and also IBC 2021.
And can you repeat that again, please, slowly?
NFPA, which stands for National Fire Protection Association, 101 for Section Life Safety, and then also the IBC 20, IBC, which is International Building Code 2021 Edition.
Okay. You can provide us that for the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, just one question. Mr. Sax, for the next meeting, because I know we asked for this meeting, was you had indicated there were several other mosques in the area that you had used as comparative.
Yeah.
Can you bring that comparative data for the next meeting?
Yeah, actually, we had prepared, we had investigated some of the traffic concerns raised by the board. We investigated, I think there was an issue, or there was a development that was approved off of Ernst &amp; Road or off of Borden Town Avenue. And we have information on that. What happened is, once we decided to make revisions to these plans, our traffic, our revised traffic study somewhat is, it became somewhat moot. So now it's going to be even further updated, and we have that information, and we'll provide that.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have one real quick, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to get into the details of the exhibit, but looking quickly, there are seven spaces under the building that would not have a stacked, be stacked spaces. Do you know which seven those spaces are?
The ones that are isolated, like, for example, the handicap area, that would be difficult to do. But we did not specifically locate where the seven was. I think the Klaus manufacturer will come back and specifically tell us which ones ideal.
Yeah, if you can let us know which ones will have stackers and which ones won't.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can provide that.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Looking at your revised plan, the multipurpose room has a passageway to the main gentleman's sanctuary. Certainly, you know, the concern would be that there really isn't going to be a reduction in the amount of gentleman's prayer space because of this. So, you know, what's the purpose of the passageway between the main gentleman's prayer space and the now redefined multipurpose room?
I guess conceivably, we could close that off.
Yeah, we can close it off.
We can close that off.
Because there's accessway going through the main.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I think that would address concern that it's a distinction without a difference.
Yeah. I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just for members of the public, we are going to open it up to public questions of the testimony that's given to the, that's given this evening. However, I did want to advise everyone that the board has limited questions right now, and so have our professionals, because we're just seeing this. So at the following meeting, after the board's professionals and the board has a chance to review and digest all of this, we will open it back up to the public to ask questions at that time so that you have informed questions and not just acting on what we're hearing at this evening, because this is a lot of new information. So we will open up, so you can ask questions. If you do have anything that is, you know, you want to ask now rather than waiting. But if you do, we will have this information posted on the website. It will be available for your review. You will, you know, before the next hearing, also have information regarding our, the board's professionals' reviews and their reports to consider, so that when you come at the next meeting, you'll probably have more informed questions and be able to know exactly what you want to ask. But that being said, you know, we are here at a public hearing. So if anyone wants to come up at this time to make, has any questions regarding the testimony given, you're more than welcome to. But you will also be, once again, be given an opportunity at the following meeting to do so.
If you want to come up, just make a line behind the podium.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And just to confirm, Mr. Sax, the architect will be available at the next meeting to answer any question that members of the public will have after they review the plans, and they have the opportunity to hear the comments from the board's professionals, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
State your name and where you live, please.
Don Scorano, Frederick Place. Just a quick question now, with that passageway, whatever room, there's two doors, one to lead out of the building and one's to the main prayer room, you're saying? If you lock that door out, doesn't that become a fire project, a fire problem?
Well, I...
As long as if there's an exit out of the building, you can't lock. I know this, when I work in buildings, you can't lock doors, or it becomes a fire hazard.
All I can say is, at this point, our engineer, our, we're going to review it, and if that is an issue that comes up, it will be addressed in our report, and it will be addressed to the, at this time, I don't think our professionals are ready to address that, because we literally got it, you saw it being handed to us. So, you know, we don't have that information, review that review at this time.
And the architect said that everything was going to be under the National Fire Code anyway, so... I mean, he's got to, he's got to, he's got to make the building fit the codes.
And we're still, we're still at, what, 42,000 square feet? For 330 people, okay? I understand that, that sounds...
If we're talking about that passage between the...
Sounds like common sense right there. What else? Let's see, I have one more thing to say. I drew a blank on that one. I forget, I'll think about it. I'm not getting... The main thing I'm hearing is, how do we police this? Like, I understand it's 330 people now, 332 people. Are we going to have somebody in there saying, okay, this is a fine, this is a fine? Nobody's, you know, everybody's smoking mirrors, yeah, we're only going to have this many people, we're only going to have this many people. But when this does happen, who's going to be responsible?
The code officials in town take care of occupancy laws. And if there's a, you know, like, when we had the first meeting and we had, we couldn't have the meeting because we had too many people, they shut us down.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
And I apologize, it took me a little while to read through the new stuff and compare it to the original application. But in the original application, it stated for the parking analysis that there was going to be 973 seats in the places of worship. Are you telling me now with the changing one of the prayer rooms to a multipurpose room, that number drops to 454 in the prayer areas?
I think, Mr. Mueller, what happened, and I think we alluded to it at the last meeting, I think we explained it, is that that was based on people standing, which obviously is not the case in this scenario. So that was an error. The correct number, though, would have been 650 based on the size of the building. But once we factor in the size of these prayer mats, we're able to reduce it from 650 down to, down to 454. And in terms of the parking, I do have my engineer here this evening. If you want me to just have him come up here, and he can talk about what the parking requirements are based upon these revisions.
Well, I'm just trying to, I know that there was some preliminary discussions between, I think, your engineer and our engineer about how you calculate the parking requirements, and it's either based upon square footage or number of chairs, seats?
Prayer mats, yes.
And I know that there was some agreement on what formula should be used, and I'm not sure if there's, if that has been agreed to on both sides as to what the formula should be. I was just trying to figure out where the difference came from.
The 900 is not...
It's not accurate.
It's not accurate. It's not accurate, yeah.
So that, the, the real number is 650, or the previous number was?
Correct. The real number now is 454.
And that's based upon occupancy, number of seats?
Floor mats.
It's based on, on the...
Floor mats.
It's based on the floor mats.
On the floor mats.
On the prayer mats.
Okay, thank you.
And also, Mr. Muller, and I think again, if the fire marshal says the number is less, then that's the number that we'll, we'll agree upon, obviously.
Sir, you'd like to speak? Go ahead. Your name and address, please?
Michael Khan, 12 Vincent Street, Portland. I guess my, I've got questions for several, I don't know if it's the applicant would be the most appropriate, or Mr. Sacks, that would answer the questions.
Good, ask Mr. Sacks.
Okay.
He's getting paid.
Oh, I do have a, first question is directly pertaining to Mr. Sacks's lack of testimony. What exactly do Mr. Sacks's words mean in the order of this event, in our discussions and the planning board meetings? Would be my first question.
Well, I, I'm not testifying. All I gave was a summary of what Mr., before Mr. Javier testified, I just was giving a summary of what was being proposed here. But now that is on the record. So you obviously have Exhibit A5, which shows the revisions to the plans, and you have Exhibit A6. So I'm not testifying at a hearing, sir. It, it's not my function to testify, and certainly if you have any questions, you know, the applicant can answer.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add to that, as the attorney, the attorney doesn't provide testimony or any factual information. However, the attorney does represent the applicant as a legal representative, so they can bind the applicant. So if the attorney does say that we will agree to something, the applicant has to agree to it. That's, is the applicant's legal representation. So I, I think some of your concerns may be, you know, whether, when the, Mr. Sacks says we will do it, whether that's binding. Yes, it is.
For example, he claimed that the illegal structure was gone at the original meeting back in February. Still there. That's inaccurate information that's conveyed and documented until today. Mr. Sacks also had previously not testified, provided knowledge of the East Brunswick Islamic Center on 402 New Brunswick Avenue as an example of a majid in a residential zone. And because of his knowledge of that process, I have looked into what exactly that exists in terms of parking versus the size of the structure that was approved. And I found 5,476 square foot facility, has 99 parking spots. Can also find information regarding the success of the majid in East Brunswick, and the creation of parking challenges that it creates into the neighborhood, and a genuine concern for residents surrounding the area of having to deal with overflow parking. That, I'll reserve comment for another time, but I don't think that is anywhere apparent in any of these conversations. I'm, I'm going to ask a question of, I believe it would need to be specific to the religious proceedings at the majid, that I don't believe that Mr. Sacks would be appropriate to answer. So I don't know if it's the engineer, who seems, I would say, would be a pretty accurate person to question regarding timing of the services, how long the services are. But I would have a particular question that I would like to address to someone who is specifically knowledgeable of that process, of now, as it was just provided, as not testimony, but times, a time change from 12, or a service from 12:30 to 12:50, and then apparently a changeover to another service at 1:45 to 2:15. So, easy math, 45, 55 minute changeover for a pretty well-attended event on a holiday Friday, that I would like to ask a few questions of what that turnover event between events looks like, and the time involved to go from the first service to the second service. And I, I, I can ask it now, I don't know who to ask it of. So if, if I ask the applicant, or I ask Mr. Sacks, who would be the most relevant person to provide testimony to how much turnover time there is between services?
Well, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't come from me. That would likely come from my traffic engineer, who is not testifying this evening. I mean, the only testimony we presented really is the architect...
When you present the new information to us?
He will, he will. It's going to, right, it'll be in his traffic report, his revised traffic report, and that would be obviously subject to any questioning, I guess, at your next meeting.
Okay.
And Mr. Sacks, to the extent that there are relevant timing issues that may require testimony from a representative of the house of worship, will there be a representative of the house?
Absolutely. So, knowing that there's not an expert here this evening, I am going to ask the architect questions regarding the lift systems, and the time it takes to unload a car from the top of the lift system to the bottom of the lift system, and free that car, two cars from two parking spots to allow two new service attendees for the next service to come in and use those spots. And, you want to answer, Mr. Sacks?
Can I?
Or, sorry, architect, that was an architect question.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Sacks, can we have the lift people come next meeting?
Yes, that, that's what I was going to say.
You know, I mean, because to me, I have the same, same concerns that you do, and I don't want to get into testifying or anything. These are great questions that you're coming up with, but we're going to have to wait so we can go through this. That's, all right? So I think having a representative come, come in and tell us, because I don't know how, how they work.
Will Mr. Sacks not testify, but will he provide confirmation that the applicant will provide an onsite lot attendant and offer to provide safe actuation of that lift system at all times if there are any services going on that...
Well, I'm not sure.
No one knows, no one knows how many attendees will be there on a given day. So is there going to be a full-time lot attendant, seven days a week, 365 days a year, onsite to manage your lift system as they would in a parking deck, as I have experienced in parking decks? It takes a few minutes, and it's certainly an unsafe operation, in my uninformed opinion, to allow a self-congruent to unload a six, 7,000 pound, I'll take, I will use electric vehicles. So we'll use a 3,000 pound vehicle from the top of the lift when there's someone looking to get out from underneath and to pull clothes and kids and things out of their minivans. I have particular questions regarding the timing and the professional nature of an operation that would be safe for congregants to come and go, especially between a quick turnover, that would far exceed the rate a professional parking deck would provide services to people hiring for them without a time constraint. I, I'll leave it at that. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your input. Anybody else would like to speak? Sir, name and address, please?
Gary Bello Thompson Place, Portland.
Gary.
How many lift spaces are there?
57.
57? Do they go one at a time, or all at once, or?
No, I believe, again, we'll, we'll provide testimony at the next hearing from the manufacturer as to how the system operates, but my understanding is they work one at a time.
So that would be quite an extensive operation to...
Gary, this is what they gave us to read about for, for the lift systems. It's about a 20-page thing. So it's going to take me a night to sit down and digest this before I have questions for, for the next people. So to answer your question, I don't know what it's going to take, but we're going to find out.
But they were supposed to be the ones to answer that, not necessarily you.
They are going to answer it. They answered it with this for us to read, and then he's going to bring in his, his people next month, the, the next meeting.
All right, so just consider the time involved.
And then you're going to have, then you're going to have attorneys be able, after, after our professionals go over and give you our insight on it, you're going to be able to put your input in afterwards, okay? But we'll be all a little more informed.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, can, can you represent to the folks here this evening that there will not only be a representative of the lift system, but also a representative of the mosque who will be able to discuss how it will be implemented and its, its use as it relates to the hours of operation, which are reasonable questions related to the use of the property?
Yes, and we'll, we'll provide that.
Thank you.
Obviously, I'm having trouble with this microphone, but anyway, we just recently received this information, so I haven't even fully digested it, but we understand that you've got some valid questions, valid concerns, and, and I think you're right. I think you need to know that during this 55-minute interval...
That we can do it.
That parking lot can be cleared and filled up again. That, that's what you need to know, and we will provide that.
And so the public knows there will be a representative of the mosque to talk about the operational aspect of it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am? Name and address, please?
My name is Elizabeth Pennella, and I live on Parkway Place in Portland. I have some major questions here. Now, you're saying that the prayer rooms are going to be changed and stuff, so now the occupants during prayer service would be maybe 454 people, including men and women in the two prayer groups, which is fine, you're going to change things around. What happens, this is a giant building. You have two prayer rooms. You have all this other space. Now, during prayer service, these other spaces are not being used. When prayer service is not being used, what are these other spaces being used for? How many people are going to be coming to the buildings at those times? What time is the building open from in the morning to the evening with prayer services and other things going on? This greatly affects me, because I live right there. Are overflow going to come up Parkway Place, Lewis Street, Vincent Street, Joyce Place, Villanova, Rutgers Road? Where are these cars going? When the cars exit the parking lot, if they cannot make a left, are they all going to go down a Parkway Place, across Lewis, down center? It takes me sometimes three light changes at Boardington and Ernston Road to make a left turn out of my road, because nobody respects the do-not-block intersection, and people are flying from the mosque area or further west down the left side to try to get to the left turn sign. I have, have friends and neighbors have accidents down there. I have myself almost gotten hit by cars trying to cross that street. And you're talking about prayer services here, there, wherever, but you have a whole big building, so it's not just prayer service. You are opening this up for a lot of other things. You want to have classes there, offices there, basketball there, but this is only for the mosque. This is not for the community. There are other places. Just because this is a house of worship, there are other houses of worship that use one room for basketball, cafeteria, whatever else they need as an all-purpose room. Now you're going to have more all-purpose rooms? I really think the size of this building should be smaller, and it should be more for the area. This is a residential area. You are taking the area of three or four homes to build this giant building, and it really should not be here. It's going to cause too much problems on Ernston Road, too much problem for the people that live in this area, and it doesn't seem like anybody cares. Like, you're going to agree to this, and you're going to be nice and everything else, but nobody cares. They didn't care when they started, they didn't care that, and, you know, I keep coming to these meetings, I'm here past my bedtime because I work early in the morning, but who cares? Because, you know, we'll just push it off and push it off. This is unfair to the residents of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Ma'am, you, you raised a lot of excellent points, ma'am. And I'm going to start with the bad news, which is that this board, whether here or in any other municipality in the state of New Jersey, does not have the authority with respect to governing off-site traffic issues. It's a frustration that you will, that you will hear people deal with from Cape May all the way up to High Point. And so the concerns that you've raised about the off-site traffic issues are legitimate. They certainly impact everybody who's here. They impact everybody who lives and works in the area. But as anybody who's served on the boards, who's represented the boards, council here has represented boards, they'll tell you. Unfortunately, those are issues that the state of New Jersey has told us that we're not able to address. Now, with respect to the other issues you rave, which are, are excellent issues, are what are going to be the hours of operation of this facility with respect to its non-sanctuary, non-religious uses, the educational uses, the recreational uses? The applicant has provided testimony on those, on those items. And the applicant's representative, as represented by counsel, will be back at subsequent meetings. And I suspect that as part of it, we're certainly very far from there at this point, but as part of any, should there be a memorializing resolution, there would be hours of operation that would be set forth in that document establishing when it could be used. And so certainly, there is more than just a, more than just a house of worship here. But what I will tell you is, and it's, I'm not, I, I have no opinion, I'm not here to express an opinion, I'm here as counsel of the board. What the law tells us is, is that there are ancillary uses to religious uses, and those uses are educational, they are social. I happened to grow up in northern New Jersey in a, in a Catholic community where there was a Catholic church with a basketball court, where there was CYO basketball, there were dinners, there were meetings, and though, that may be what's customarily viewed as being part of typical religious life. And what this applicant is proposing is an application that includes some of those items. Now, the hours of operation do need to be set forth. It, it, there is no right to play basketball at 2:00 in the morning. There's no right to have parties and weddings at 2:00 in the morning. And I, I don't believe, and I know, I have my notes in front of me, that the applicants indicated they will not do that, but should this get to a memorializing resolution, your concerns, ma'am, will be addressed there as far as when it can be used, when those other uses, other than the religious use, the, the recreational, the educational can be used. And those should be set forth in the resolution, and they're, and the town's entitled to say, this is when that can be used. And they have the right to do that. And, and so all the items you raised, ma'am, are completely legitimate, and, and that's the purpose of this meeting. And I know you said, well, it keeps going on and on, but one of the reasons is that this board is, is asking a lot of questions and, and is trying to create the best project available for the municipality. And, and, and that's what's going on. And, and, and as I started by saying, I would be the first person to hold my hand up and agree with you with respect to your concerns of off-site traffic. And I think anybody who's ever been involved in municipal land use and municipal development would agree with you. Unfortunately, as a board here, this board's ability to take into consideration the impact of off-site traffic is very limited. It, it's, the state in New Jersey has told us that for decades at this point. So it's not that your concerns aren't legitimate, and it's not that your concerns aren't shared by all the members of this board, but as far as the, the off-site traffic impact goes, there's a lot of limitations that, that, that this board can consider, because every application has to be considered on its own. And as far as the, the use of this property with respect to non-traditional religious uses, this applicant has set forth when that, when those uses will be permitted. And I suspect this board, I know, I know this board, will set forth when that will be permitted to occur. And so you coming here and setting, and, and reinforcing that is great, and that, that tells everybody what your concerns are and what the community's concerns are, and they'll be addressed. And when the state of New Jersey revises the law and lets local planning and zoning... And when the state of New Jersey revises the law and lets local planning and zoning boards have more authority on off-site traffic, I think, I think a lot of people would be very happy. But right now, that, though, there are very limited, limited scope that we can consider that, and and I know you don't want to hear that, and I'm, and I, and I don't want to be the person to tell you that, but that's where we are, ma'am, and thank you for coming up.
Gentlemen, name and address, please.
I'm from Tim Parkway Place. I have a couple of questions. One, is the exhaust system or the carbon dioxide system going to be upgraded because you're adding these more cars to the garage?
Can you answer that one?
Can you repeat that?
The exhaust, the carbon dioxide system, the fans that are going to suck all the car's exhaust out of the garage, the parking garage, is it going to be upgraded now because you're adding more cars there? And if it's upgraded, now is that going to take up more space? Is that going to be in a bigger area? And how noisy is that going to be?
Do you want to answer that now? Mr. Chairman, I think my engineer could probably answer that question.
Is he sworn in?
He was sworn in at previous meetings. Mr. Adnan Khan.
You've, you've, you've already been sworn in, as long as you understand that you're still under oath, and you continue to be under oath for this application.
That is correct. Yeah, anything, any exhaust system will be designed per the, uh, courts, so, and again, based on the emissions, it has to be whatever the fan size should be, where, how high it should be discharged, that is all per the code requirements.
Okay, is that inside the paperwork that you just, is any of that noted in the paperwork you just gave them, that that you are going to be upgrading it now?
Again, we are here for the approval at this point. Well, if if the applicant gets the approval, these plans have to go through an extensive design process, what we call CDs, construction documents, where we have to comply with all the code requirements, whatever code applies to the project. It will be submitted to the building department, they will review against the code whether we meet the requirements or not before they issue any permits. So that's the whole process.
Okay. The gentleman in the blue, with the blue tie, I was just talking, you had mentioned something at 2:00 AM about playing basketball. What about having religious services at 2:00 AM? Having religious services at 1:00 AM with having hundreds of cars pull onto the property during these services, is that allowed?
Well, sir, I think what we've heard from this applicant is that they've stipulated to the hours of operation for their religious services, and I understand.
During Ramadan?
I understand that prior to this application, there have been issues regarding when the property is used and how it's being used, but what we can represent to you is that through this process, this board is going, if this board adopts a resolution approving this, it would include representations by the applicant about when that property would be used for those purposes. And we have heard this evening, including other times when when count, when they've been here, regarding their timing of usage, and they would be, they would be held to those hours of operation, so.
Mr. Counsel, I think the issue is the non-testimony we've heard from their counsel does not match with what is publicly available as prayer times. And we've asked over the court many of these, um, planning board meetings for the times, and we can't come up with it yet. So to answer your, to ask the question you want to ask, what are the prayer times today?
Well, that's, that's a pretty broad question.
No, just today.
Oh, today?
Today.
Sure. Go ahead.
What's the first prayer time and the last prayer time?
Uh, the first prayer time, which is what we call fajr, starts around four, four fifteen, four twenty, and you can offer their prayers, that prayer service from the start time up to the sunrise time. Sunrise is, what, I think, six thirty?
Five forty-two.
Yeah.
AM or PM?
AM, in the morning.
That sunrise is AM.
In the morning, yes.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, and then, yeah, okay. So, so that's the time. However, the, uh, the masjid prayer offers the congregation prayer for fajr time around five fifteen as of today.
And the last prayer of the day?
The last is isha, uh, which is the nighttime. Uh, it starts around, I would say, around ten o'clock these days.
Right.
And again, you can pray that service from ten o'clock until the morning prayer time, which is four o'clock. But the, the mosque, of course, nobody's going to come in the middle of the night to offer that prayer, so as soon as the.
They won't do it.
Let me answer it.
Let him answer.
Yeah.
Please.
So as soon as the time happens, like, say, ten o'clock these days, usually ten, ten, ten fifteen, the masjid offers the congregation prayer, which lasts probably ten, fifteen minutes, and people go to their home.
All right. So I think what maybe some of the public, and I want to speak for the public, but maybe some of the concern we're having is, you know, past testimony tells us it's six AM to eight thirty PM.
Mm-hmm.
Your, your words, right, in the past?
That's.
When it's, when it's not. So the concern that the previous gentleman had about non-testimony is what can we do with a non-testimony?
Well, again, that was the average, because in the winter months, obviously, it's, it's, it's obviously terminates much earlier than ten PM in the summer service.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah. I believe the testimony that was provided, again, we were testifying, I think, in, we started like this process, I believe, February, March, in April, so that was basically the winter timings that we were proposing. But, yeah, again, you're right, the time changes with summer and winter again on a daily basis.
Moon dyspermy.
Within a minute or two minutes on a daily basis, up or down, depending upon the season or depending upon the time of the year we are in. So, yeah, but again, so that's why, like, that testimony is not completely, I mean, it's not wrong, but it's, it is for winter timings, that you should expect or anticipate the timing of those prayers during the winter time.
And and let's just go back to the record. On April third, there was testimony provided that the prayer hours of operation were six AM until eight thirty PM. And those were representations that were made by the representative of the mosque, not, not a professional, the representative of the mosque. And so I think the, the board would like to know that those representations that were made in the prior hearing date are are still represented, still considered appropriate, and should, should this application move forward, would be part of any memorializing resolution.
To answer that question, I believe those representations were made based upon winter hours. As I indicated at the outset of the meeting, we will provide this board with an accurate calendar, which will set forth the times which will occur during the winter, spring, summer, fall.
Mr. Sax, are you also going to tell us where you're going to go with the big holidays? Are you still going to go off-site?
Yes. Yeah, that, that, that's still, that's still controlled.
So Ramadan and anything else that creates a big crowd, you're going to go somewhere else?
Board of Education property.
All right.
All right. Next concern is the garage that's at two fourteen. You guys own the property at two fourteen, the garage there. That garage is Schoolhouse A or Schoolhouse Three, Ernston Road? Is that going to be saved for history? This is a historical building.
I'm not aware of any designation on that. I mean, certainly, we could look into that. I mean, not aware of that.
Mr. Cornell, do you know? We're not aware of that, but, Mr. Sax, you're going to check into that?
Okay, and then my last concern is in two thousand and seven, I believe it was, June fourth, there was an explosive device found at the Sampson Elementary School from the explosion, from Gillespie explosion. Is the property going to be searched? Because that property there is point three miles away from where all the stuff went in the air. There could possibly be something there. Would someone do a search for that?
Again, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. What was the, what was the address, first of all, of the schoolhouse?
I don't believe it's appropriate.
I don't think it is either.
Counsel, counsel, I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that you not respond to that comment at this time, sir.
Thank you.
The schoolhouse address was, uh, two fourteen Ernston Road.
Okay, thank you.
It's the garage on the right side in between two fourteen and two sixteen, and I believe there's a plaque inside of the garage at Sates that it was a schoolhouse. That's it, thank you.
You next. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Joe Carmazin, three twenty-two Ernston Road. Uh, I had a couple of questions. Firstly, um, I know there's going to be kids, is there going to be, like, summer camps? Are kids going to be spending the night there? Is anyone ever going to be sleeping there?
I don't believe so. I don't think there's any dormitory facilities in this, in this mosque, so no.
Okay. Um, next question, well, it's not really a question, more of a statement. You know, we've been speaking about the traffic, you made that along, um, about the traffic and how we're kind of powerless against it. What about the size of the building in the residential area and that it doesn't conform to what other buildings look like in the area? And they think they testified that the lights will never completely turn off, they just dim them at night. I mean, this is, you know, a large building, dimly lit, is going to, you know, that's a, I live right across the street, so this is like a huge concern to me, something like that.
Very legitimate, sir, and and I believe in my notes, um, that the applicant has provided testimony that the building will comply with the municipal lighting standards, meaning that there will not be, um, any what we call light pollution or, um, overflow to, to the other property, that they will have their lighting designed so that it's captured on site, whether it's through the, the number of what we, you know, number of candle lots, or whether it's through the design and how they have the, the lighting configured, but testimony, those questions were asked at a, at a prior meeting.
Yeah, I was there. Also about the signage, because I think this, is the sign lit?
Well, I think the sign is probably back illuminated, uh, but again, I think we testified at one of the earlier hearings that once the building is shut down for the evening, there's no need to have the lights on other than security lighting, motion detector.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Lastly, the other night I was reading through the several municipal land use, and statute number twenty-six sixty-five talks about alternatives in section F. It states a discussion of set, set design and project location alternatives that were considered shall be provided. Furthermore, it states the discussion shall indicate why an alternative was rejected if it would have results in less of a negative impact on the proposed development. Um, I believe I heard some rumblings that there were alternative sites presented to them, and they were declined, but I think, um, they're supposed to give reasons for why each site was declined. You could look up that statute, you could talk about it at the next meeting if you want.
Well, we haven't presented any planning testimony, uh, but I could tell you that this, uh, applicant has owned this property for a number of years already, but we haven't presented any planning testimony.
Yeah, but it says if there's neg, less of a negative effect at another site, you have to say why, just because he's been there for a couple of years, operating illegally? Thank you.
Sir, that's a, it's a, it's a great planning question, and when they put their planner on, they will have to answer that question.
Question for the architect.
Sir?
What model lift are you using?
I'm sorry, what was?
What model lift are you proposing?
I believe it's highlighted on the brochure that we submitted. It's also on the drawings.
Oh, this is just one lift?
Yeah, it's on the drawing on the first sheet.
It's a CB sixty-one dash one ninety. Ninety.
Thank you.
That's not final.
Yes. Sir, name and address?
Sure. Hazem Mustafa, Gurnee Drive, Portland. So I have been joining this meeting for several times before, and we always hear, I think, the same concerns from our neighbors regarding the mosque project. It will be repeated, the same meeting every time. While we see these people, they already did hundreds of amendments in their design and architecture to meet the requirements and codes of the building to meet New Jersey for each sector, including fire and, and water. And at the same time, so regarding the praying times for Muslims, so it's different from summer to winter times based on the timing in America's keeping change. So in this case, so I don't feel any, like, confusion regarding this time, because it's very clear and obvious, if you check any Muslim calendars regarding the praying times, either in the winter or in the summer, it would be very clear for anyone to understand how the praying times are calculated based on the sun time and sunset for either the winter timing or also summer timing. So what I feel right now is that I see the, the Muslim project to have a worship house and servant is right, that no one can be against it.
Sir, sir, and I, I don't mean this with any disrespect. Um, your, your opinion's important, this board values your opinion. The, we're, we're at the stage of this application where the public participation is questions of the, the relevant testimony that's being provided. This evening, testimony is being provided regarding certain operational issues, changes to the, um, the configuration of the building, changes to configuration of the parking. Um, there was testimony provided by both the architect and the engineer for the planner. There will be an opportunity for all members of the public to provide commentary on this application, but, but this is not that time, and, and I'm not saying that because I have an opinion on what you're saying. We have to maintain our record appropriate, and this is not the time for commentary, so I have to ask you, sir, to please, if you have, use this time to ask a question regarding the testimony that was provided here this evening, which was about modifications to the building design or internal design, as well as to the parking. And and again, sir, I, I don't, I'm not saying that because your, your commentary isn't important, there will certainly be a time for that, and on long applications like this, it can be frustrating that you have to wait till the end to, to provide that, but, um, that's the, that, that is the, that is the standard that we have to follow right now.
Sure, I understand, but at the same time, I have only one point, because I think for the.
But you have a question, sir?
Yeah. No, the question for me is I am from the public or the neighbor, and I have a concern. So this concern should be only for the traffic, or also I have to ask about what is going inside this building in terms of, they have, like, kids in classrooms, they have, like, blah, blah, blah. Is this my right to ask something like this?
Yes, absolutely.
For the internal building itself?
Yes, sir. If you have questions about, tonight, there was testimony provided about changes to the internal structure configuration of the building, as well as changes to the parking configuration. If you have questions about that, this applicant has provided two witnesses who are experts in that area, and they will answer those questions. And that, and that's the, that's what we're addressing right now.
Sure. Okay, I already hear their answers, and it's very clear for everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to the extent you have commentary, you certainly can come back.
No, no, okay, Samaya Sadhar, Jackson Ave. Um, I have a question first, but I wanted, I may have some commentary as well, and I know, um, just now he was told to not continue with his commentary, but I think today we're allowing a lot of commentary, so we should allow it for everyone. And the next meeting, hopefully, we can tell everyone, if you don't have a question, please stop. My first question is, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding because, um, like, what is prayer according to a Muslim? So maybe, is it possible to have a demonstration or a video for next meeting? If possible, because a prayer service, right now, a lot. If possible, because a prayer service, right now, a lot of people just walked out, it's because they have to go do prayer, and it has three units to a prayer, so they'll come back in like five minutes. Because there's not that understanding, it's like, why are you going five o'clock in the morning? How long are you going to take all of that concern? But that's not always the case. I wanted to say...
Ma'am, do you have questions for the applicant's experts or the applicant's representative regarding the subject matter of the testimony provided here today?
I was going to say, is there someone, a Muslim expert, that can answer questions for the next meeting?
This board does not...
Or someone...
Does not qualify its experts based on religious belief.
Someone who's knowledgeable on Islam, they don't need to be Muslim. But, I would like to continue to say that I am part of the public, because I'm, I want the masjid to come there, and second of all, the word is mesjid, mesjid. I want the masjid to come there, someone mentioned that it's taking down three houses, but it's building...
Ma'am, ma'am, do you have a question for the applicant's experts?
I did, I did ask my question, and then there's some...
Where was it, ma'am? And I'll make sure they answer it, you just have to, the chairman will make sure they answer it. What's your question?
I'm just confused why there's so much, I can't speak freely, but other people can speak freely, and then, there's a, at the end, a little bit of this back and forthness. I don't mind it, I appreciate it, but I think it should be held for everyone. Because I didn't know commentary is allowed right now.
There is a, so, the way that the applications before this board works is that the applicant presents testimony, and in this case, because of the, it's a large project, and so, sometimes they'll come before a board and it's a very simple project, and they put their experts on and that's that. Here, this is a large project, and this, ma'am, in this project has different applications, right? There's a religious connotation, there's religious uses, there are recreational uses, there are parking concerns, there are open space concerns, and so the applicant has been actually very, very accommodating, and has been presenting their testimony and presenting their experts in updating their testimony and their exhibits as they go along. So, it hasn't been as traditional, one, you know, A, B, C, as you would see on a smaller one, but the applicant has been putting on their presentation throughout this, and it's moved around. And the way, how applications work is that you will have, the applicant will put on their expert for engineering, their expert for architecture, for parking, for traffic, for planning, we haven't gotten to planning yet, we'll get there. And the public, the board, the board's experts and the public have the opportunity to ask questions about that. And then, when that's all done, what happens is, there's an opportunity to provide commentary on that and to give your position on the application as a whole. And in many, in smaller applications that are not this large, then, that's a one meeting, maybe it's two meetings, this is a very large application, so this is taking longer. And while you may want to do that tonight, you say, well, I don't want to come back and do that, unfortunately, how we have to prepare and we have to maintain this application moving along is inappropriate method. So...
I understand.
What I'm going to ask you is, if you have questions for the applicant's experts or the applicant's representative regarding the subject matter of the testimony being provided here this evening, I am sure they will answer it. And if they don't, the chairman will tell them they answered, or get you an answer.
I understand the process.
But when you have commentary on the overall merit or your support of the application, which is completely legitimate, whether you agree with the application, whether you don't agree with it, you have the opportunity to appear before this board and express those beliefs, but this evening is not the time to do that.
I understand that, I'm asking, why can't we have the same standard for everyone?
We do, we do. Show me where we haven't, everybody...
Chairman, if I can respond, if, first of all, I will state for the record that this board is doing the proper thing in scrutinizing this application, and it wouldn't be just because it's a mosque, if it was a synagogue, if it was a church, if it was any type of use that's in a residential neighborhood, it needs to be scrutinized. So, it doesn't make a difference what the type of application is. I would encourage you to come back at the last hearing, and you can certainly state your opinion as to whether you're in favor or against this application. But if you don't have a question for either my architect or engineer, then you can preserve your comment for another hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, hang on. Is there anybody? He spoke already. Has any, you spoke already, so has anybody else want to speak before he does? Not cutting you off, I'm just giving everybody else a chance. If you're patient, I'll let you be last. Name and address, please, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rose Lubin, and I live at 18 Eric Court, which is a dead-end street at the end of Ernston Road. So, in order for me to leave my development, I have to go to Ernston Road, because it's dead-end. Every morning I get up and I'm out on the road, I try to cross onto Ernston Road at 7:30 in the morning, which I used to do fine over the years, I've been here for 58 years, so the town has quite tripled.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, ma'am, just as we just spoke about to the other witness, this is not the time to give testimony or comments, it's questions to these witnesses based on their testimony.
Okay, so...
Your, if you want to provide testimony about your, you know, issues with the property that you addressed, that's at the end.
Having to do with traffic, which is the main problem.
Well, traffic wasn't provided today, we were saying we're going to, their traffic engineers coming at the next hearing, so if you have any traffic questions of their witnesses, he's not here today to address it, that would have to be, happen at the next meeting.
What about parking? Can I discuss parking problems?
Well, they did provide testimony as to the new parking design for the underground parking, so you can ask questions relating to that, yes.
Nothing to do with the parking?
No, I said you can, they provided testimony regarding parking, so you can address it.
Our planning board, I don't know how long you've been on our board.
But it just has to be a question.
Okay, but when, I live by the high school also, so you can imagine what I have to deal with at my end, okay? So, I try to, I try to make, I try to make a left out of there, but I can't, I have to take a right in order to go to South Amboy, that's how bad it is. The other thing is, I live by the high school, and when the high school was added on to, obviously, I don't know, was it planted?
Excuse me, ma'am, you're still discussing driving, your driving conditions on outside park, and we've already had our other attorney explain that that can't be considered.
But I'm talking about beware of mistakes made, because our high school was added on to, my neighbor and I went down and told them, you're losing all, you're taking away the parking spots, we don't have enough, we're adding on to the school and making it larger, so we therefore need more parking space, don't we? But the opposite happened, so where do the kids park?
Ma'am, are you talking about this application or this high school?
Every day in Kennedy Park, and the kids are on the...
This is not, this is not the appropriate...
That has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with this application.
That's what it is.
Ma'am, the parking at Kennedy Park and a high school have nothing to do with this application.
But it shows an example of stupidity.
If you have, if you have, if you have questions about parking and traffic, when the parking...
The thing is, it's a beautiful temple, deserves to be on a beautiful piece of land, not that land, it's not nice enough, and it's inappropriate. You need a place with land that looks beautiful, and I hope you get it, I hope you do, thank you.
I'm going to ask that the members of the board disregard those comments as far as their evaluation.
Sir, name and address?
Drew Weingarth, W-E-I-N-G-A-R-T-H, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Even though I live in East Brunswick, I have, was conceived and raised in Madison Park, Old Bridge section of 08859. Just for clarification, questions, please, for the architect? I think the dry phone message for tonight, from what we've heard, is the following. Based on the changes for the rooms and the parking, what did you, can you please confirm that you did say that based on these changes, the overall building height is not changing?
Correct, the height's going to be the same, it's not going to get higher. I mean, the basement ceiling got higher, but we're also going to reduce the overall height of the building, so it's still going to remain the same.
Thank you very much. And based on the changes of the interior of the building, based on the prayer area going to a multipurpose room, the footprint, can you please confirm that the footprint still has not changed?
The footprint's still the same, correct.
So, that means the square footage of the building is still the same?
No, we eliminated some programming and space, so we did reduce the overall square footage.
Can you please confirm, can you please state what the reduction in the square footage was as a result of that?
On the third floor, we removed over 2,000 square feet and allocated the programming to the lower areas.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think at the outset of the meeting, I indicated that the square footage was being reduced from 44,841 square feet to 42,687, so roughly 2,200 square foot reduction.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that very much, and thank you all for your time and service, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Gentlemen?
Hi, my name's Osmann, O-S-M-A-N, last name's Zaman, Z-A-M-A-N, I live at 418 Main Street. I know hours of operations are coming up, so I actually have a question for the board, is there ordinances that this application has to abide by, being nonprofit or for-profit? Like, how are the hours of operations being determined? That's actually a question either, either one can answer.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I'm, can look into it to give a definite answer, but I'm not aware of any specific ordinance that addresses our hours of operation in the township for any type of use, specifically if it's industrial or commercial or so forth, but I will confirm that for the next meeting. However, that being said, there are other ordinances that may come into effect on certain things, noise ordinances, light ordinances, that will affect how certain uses can be operated or when they can be operated. But that's usually what happens before this board, is one of the questions this board asks, or any planning board asks for any applicant, is what's your hours of operation? And as the attorney had mentioned previously, that gets then included in the resolution if the application is approved, and then that becomes the governing document that says when that operation can be, you know, open, closed, the hours of operation that's permitted, and that gets enforced by the zoning official for the borough. So, even if there is no specific ordinance, which I said I will confirm, whatever this body decides for any type of use, that becomes then now the governing document for that.
Yep, thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else? Ma'am? Name and address, please.
My name, it's Carol Van Sickle, spelled all one word, no extra letters, Carol. I live on the other side of Ernston Road in Old Bridge. Now, I have a question, I guess this is engineering, have they done soil studies so that they don't end up with a big sinkhole? Now, I remember the sinkhole at the intersection of Ernston Road and Wardentown, and I'm going to know, did they do soil studies, have they done that? Have they considered a retaining wall where they took out all those trees and are going to be taking out all those trees so they don't end up with the neighbors in the parking lot?
As far as the soil study, we did some soil studies for stormwater management system. However, after the approval, there will be a detailed soil study done for bearing capacity and for the structural design. When the project gets into that phase of structural design, there is very extensive requirements that a structural engineer would require to prepare what kind of a foundation and what loads the soil can take, so that is part of the next phase after the approval. As far as the retaining wall, you don't just put the retaining wall where the trees are taken out, usually there are certain criterias where you want to cut down the slope, or you want to save the slope, but in this case, we are not proposing any retaining walls, there's no retaining walls are required on the property.
And ma'am, I'm looking at my notes from our April meeting, and the applicant has represented...
I had financing questions, but I won't ask those.
No, that's not appropriate for a second, but ma'am, 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 and we have more information for...
Ma'am?
Ma'am, I was looking at my notes from the April meeting, and it had been, the applicant has represented to the board that they are going to undertake soil or sample analysis to determine whether or not the construction would undermine any of the adjacent properties, because there were neighbors who raised concerns about whether or not this construction would result in there being undermining of their property, and the applicant has represented to this board and is willing to put it in a subsequent approval, that they will undertake those studies to ensure that there will not be any damage or any undermining or any, anything resulting as a result of their construction on that property. Is that correct, counsel?
Mr. Pullman, you have excellent notes, and that's correct.
All right.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the men and, oh, whoop, 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 one more, go ahead. Ma'am, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Heather Posky, 71 Zaleski. I'm actually here on behalf of the Servile Historical Society just in regards to School House Number Three. Considering that structure was built in 1894, is there anyone that we could connect with as the historical society to possibly gain access to view that building?
Yes. Ma'am, if you want to reach out to my office, I'll put you in touch.
Okay, so after the meeting, you know, just get your contact, is that okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Going once, going twice, the man in the red shirt.
Just a quick question, it might be more for you guys.
Thank you for being patient.
No problem. Is there a reason why you guys can't, like, I know they did the traffic study, it was two weeks long, is there a request that you guys can make? Why aren't we running this traffic study until this meeting's over? The more information, the more you'll see during different times, different months, is there a reason why we can't request that? Why can't I run the tra, like, they run traffic studies two weeks, and then it's gone, the strips, I've seen them, why can't we be running those strips from now until...
I think there's, I believe there's a standard on how long they have to do it to make it complete, and they're not going to do it any longer than they have to. I mean, there's an expense involved in doing traffic studies, and they've done two already, and they're going to have to do another one because they've changed things around.
I got an idea, how about the fines there? Why don't we use some of that fine money to pay for another traffic study? Run the traffic study, what's the difference?
Going to direct the board to disregard that comment, thank you. No disrespect, sir.
Sir, you want to speak again?
Obviously, it has to do with the traffic study. When was the next meeting? Mike Weaver, Town Parkway? When's the next meeting?
The next meeting for this application is going to be carried to September 18th.
And when is the next traffic study going to be done?
It's going to be, well, I'll let the applicant's...
Well, I don't, I don't think we're performing another traffic study, we've already done two of them, but we're going to have a new traffic report, which will be provided for review by the board.
Okay, thank you.
Having no other questions? Do we have any other unfinished business?
No, so just for the public's awareness, this application is being carried to the September 18th Planning Board Meeting, it's, that's what I was just looking at, the secretary, it will be at this location, same time at 7:30. No further notice is going to be given unless that meeting then gets canceled for some other reason. Otherwise, be, if you want to hear the continuation of this application, be here September 18th at 7:30.
I'd like to appreciate the public for the quorum tonight, everything was pretty level-handed, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn.